This meeting to order, could we please have roll call?
Yes, you may.
I don't think our microphones are on yet.
Our mics are not working. There they are.
There they are.
Now we're on. Councilmember Shaker.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips is absent. Councilmember Cafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Grunio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Armstrong.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
And our attorney is present.
All right. Item two, presentation regarding 2024 events, activities, classes, and other stuff.
And other stuff.
Other stuff.
And services.
Good evening, Mayor.
Offered.
Vice Mayor, Council, staff. Tonight, my staff and I come to you and we're going to talk a little bit about what was really good in 2023 and what's going to be really, really great in 2024. Before the rest of the staff comes before you, let me just remind you a little bit about what Senior Services does. One of the things we do is Meals on Wheels. As you are enjoying your Meals on Wheels, this is something that is served to our Meals on Wheels participants on Monday through Friday. This is just a sampling of what is served. We are required to serve a third of the daily recommended allowance to our patrons, and that includes three to four ounces of protein, two, I'm sorry, one cup of vegetables, which is actually a little bit deceiving because it is a half cup of two different types of vegetables, four ounces of starch, which is also your grain, and then three-fourths cup of fruit. So tonight you have beef stew with potatoes and carrots and onions, which is one of your vegetables. And then you have broccoli and cauliflower as your other vegetable. You have both vitamin A and C represented this evening. And for your grain, you have bread pudding, and we threw fruit in there to take care of that requirement also. You have eight ounces of milk in front of you because we are also required to serve eight ounces of dairy on a daily basis to make your bread pudding a little more enjoyable. Not that bread pudding is not enjoyable on its own. There is a homemade caramel sauce in your bag that you can put on top of your bread pudding if you're taking it home. My recommendation would be to heat up that caramel sauce and then put it on your bread pudding because it makes it just that much better. Caramel sauce is not a recommend, uh, requirement, by the way. However, it's really delicious. With those Meals on Wheels, in 2023, we served, I have to look at my notes here, seventeen thousand one hundred and ninety Meals on Wheels in 2023. That's the most Meals on Wheels we've ever served. For the county, for, to become a Meals on Wheels participant, they do go through NACOG. And for NACOG right now, Yavapai County has over a five-hundred-person waitlist for Meals on Wheels. There's just not the capacity to serve the need that we have. And that's not necessarily just the food capacity, the volunteer capacity. We do have a volunteer driver up with you this evening. It just has to do with case management and everything else that goes along with it. So the need is always great and the resources are always small. Not only does meal, do the Meals on Wheels recipients receive this meal, so do our congregate. We lovingly call our daily meal participants our congregate. And last year, we served sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-five meals. That makes a grand total, total of thirty-four thousand forty-five meals that were served through the Senior Services Department this year. We anticipate serving well over thirty-five thousand this, this, this coming year. Also with Senior Services, we have wellness programs and all sorts of other opportunities. One of our biggest programs right now is our gentle exercise. There were over thirty-one hundred participants in gentle exercise last year. Gentle exercise is literally what it sounds like. It is as gentle as you want it or as advanced as you'd like to make it. It is actually a program that was started through another program we offer, which is called Matter of Balance. Matter of Balance is a falls prevention program. It is a six-week course that people come and attend and learn how, I would love to say not to fall, but what to do once they do fall and how to, to keep the damage to a minimum. And through that, there's exercises. Our volunteers have taken our gentle exercise class from the Matter of Balance class and turned it into a full-fledged exercise program. We have people in there with their weights, with their exercise bands, and we have close to forty participants every Tuesday and Thursday doing that. We're very proud to say that this year we fingerprinted and trained over twenty-two Meals on Wheels drivers. That's an astonishing amount. If we could find another twenty-two Meals on Wheels drivers, we would train, fingerprint and train all of them also. We serve about eighty Meals on Wheels a day, upwards of eighties. I think today was in the sixties. We could easily add one more route to that and make it a hundred people if we had the volunteers to do that. For 2024, some of the things that we're really interested in or that we're planning on continuing doing is, again, show us your sweetheart. So it would, I would encourage each of you, if you would, bring a picture of you and your sweetheart to the Senior Center and I'll put it on our sweetheart wall and everyone will know who you are. And it does not have to be a two-legged sweetheart. If your favorite sweetheart is your parakeet, bring a picture of you and your parakeet. We would love to see it. Another one that we're really proud of this year is our Week of Pampers. We have five different people that are in the beauty profession that have volunteered their time, have graciously volunteered their time for the Week of Valentine's, that will be coming in offering free haircuts, facials, mini manicures, massages, and barber shop clips. The new barber shop, I'm sorry, the new Barber School here in town has offered up to six of their students to come for an entire day and serve thirty, or to give thirty-six free haircuts to our senior population. So if you're ever in there, make sure and you say thank you. That would be awesome so they can continue. And then lastly, the, the, we have many, but the next one that we're really proud to offer this year is something new. For the Week of Memorial Day, we are asking people to bring in pictures of loved ones, family, friends, people they know, whomever, fill out a, a form and bring a picture of someone that's died in the line of service, and we'll hang those pictures up for our Memorial Wall of Remembrance. And with that, I am going to leave you in the very capable hands of our library staff, and they will, this is not library staff, but we'll get there in a minute. They'll introduce themselves and they'll be able to tell you anything and everything that you think you might have known about the library and hopefully some things that you did not know about the library.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna find a different slideshow real quick.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Stacy Johnson. I'm the Library Manager and the Tech Services Librarian. This is Rebecca. She's our Children's Librarian at our library. Chino Valley Library serves all of Chino Valley. Sorry, yes, okay. Chino Valley Library serves all of Chino Valley as well as people from Paulden and Williamson Valley. We get people even as far away as Prescott Valley that come to our programs. We have forty-five hundred people that have active library cards right now, and that's only in Chino Valley, not counting outside. We, that average is about seventy-five to eighty library cards every month, so we're growing that as well. We have everything from books to movies to audiobooks to internet computers for people that don't have internet at home or have access to a computer at home, printers for people that don't have printers. We have access to a million items outside of our library that is all spread out throughout all of the county through the Yavapai Library Network that we're part of a consortium. So they can put a hold on something that's in the Sedona Library and it will come to our library and they can pick it up at our library and then return it and we send it back. So we have many, many bins of holds that go out in, in every day that come in and out from all the libraries in the county. So our 2023 highlights, we have added, oh, I have no idea how many things, but many, many things for our library. Books and audiobooks as well. Some of the other things that we have added to our library. This is an internet hotspot. People get to take this home for three weeks. They check it out. These are on hold all the time. I think we have about three hundred and twelve checkouts in the last year on these, and we only have twenty-two. This goes home, you turn it on, plug it in at home, and you can connect your TV, your internet, your computer, your phone, anything to the internet through this. And you can connect as many devices as you want, and they get this for three weeks and they get internet. We have a lot of families that use this for homeschooling. They get on the internet for their schooling purposes. They get on the internet for internet, entertainment if they don't have access to the internet from their home. So those are very, very popular. These are, we also have playaways. What we had before are audiobooks. It's basically a book that somebody reads onto, recording onto a CD, and you have to have a CD player, which we also still have. But these are actually, these are actually playaways. We've been getting these for our kids and young adults because we find that a lot of them do not have CD players, their own CD players at home to play CDs on. This is the same thing. It's a book, one specific book on this. But all they have to do is plug in a head of, a set of headphones and hit play, and they can listen to the whole book. And they can wear them around their neck, take them with them when they go outside, sit in their room, in their bedroom and listen to a book. These are for anybody that wants to use them, but they also are very good for kids that don't want to read, that are intimidated by some of those really thick books. And also people, kids and people that have any kind of disability where it makes it hard for them to actually read the words on a page. So, and we also have, this is also an audio offering, but this is an actual book. We've got picture books as well as chapter books for the older kids. But this has an audio player inside. It's built into the book. So as you're reading, the audio player is, is reading it to you, which is great, especially for the picture books too, for the little kids when they're first learning to read. They don't have a parent there to read to them at, at any point. They can hit play and it actually tells you when to turn the page, and it reads the story to you. So they can go back and forth and read it over and over and over again. We have found that actually the most popular wonder books that we have are the nonfiction. The parents love to let them read the nonfiction books. It encourages the kids to read the, learn while they're reading. So, and one more thing. These are our backpack kits. We've gotten these together. These are for learning. They have a book in here for literacy purposes so that they can learn to read, but it also has games. This one in particular is on vehicles. It's got a bingo game so the family can, or the kids can play bingo together. It's all about vehicles. We've got a, what else have we got in here? Oh, matching game so they can match the different vehicles and stuff, and they're learning as they're playing games. And then, of course, they're always, they always have a book in here that goes along with it, as well as some toys. We've got all different, different topics. This is just one of them. Yeah. Other, other things that the parents can do to give them some ideas on how to use this to learn literacy. Our one, our one last thing here that we added last year is immersive reality or virtual reality books. This is a reader book. Most of these are on nonfiction topics, so it encourages kids to read the nonfiction and learn while they're reading. On every, every few pages, they'll have a code, a QR code on here that you scan with your phone. And you put your phone in here and strap it in, and the kids can put the glasses, hold the glasses up to their eyes, and they are in virtual reality. And it could be, we have some on the moon, we have some on the earth, we have some on, I think we have one on firefighters, different countries. This one is on King Tut's tomb, so they're learning about Egypt while they're looking at these. And it actually puts you in King Tut's tomb. And you can look around and you can click on different little things that you can look, and it's active, you know, active things, not just looking at something that's still, but it puts them in the, in the reality, so. I'll put these away while you're doing that.
So as you probably see in the newspaper and online, we have quite a few events year-round at the library. In 2023, we had two hundred and sixty library events. Now, many or most, if not, not, definitely not all of them, but we're for children and families. We love to bring free fun and educational events to families in the Chino area. So we've been having a lot of fun with that. And of those two hundred and sixty events, we had five thousand six hundred attendees altogether. Last year, our summer reading program, which is a free summer program we offer every year, about seven weeks long of encouraging children and teens and even their parents to read. And they set their own goals and might be doing good to get ten minutes a day, or other people may want to read for two hours a day. So it's really up to them, but we just want to see them reading so they can sign up for that free program. We also have free educational performers come and educators come, and they may do some, you know, wonderful program for the library such as a magic show or a stunt show. And we had those every Wednesday during the summer for June and July. And we had a record high enrollment for that in 2023. We were at about four hundred enrolled for the program, which is seventy higher than 2022. So we're excited to see what 2024 holds for that. We've expanded our storytimes. We now have two in the morning on Tuesday and two in the morning on Friday. Those are for little tots, you know, infants and toddlers, never too young to bring up the storytime and develop that love of reading. And then we also have them for the preschool and young elementary as well. And we've also expanded the Read to a Dog program. So if you're not familiar, we've been doing pet partners for a couple years. We just expanded to include Paws for Friendship, and those are held on two different days during the week. And the idea is based on research that children who read out loud to an, an animal, a loving furry friend like we all know and often have at our own homes. Those children have more confidence reading, they're more capable of reading out loud, they enjoy reading more. So this is something we definitely want to promote. So we have teams that come with their own dog. Both the handlers and the dogs have gone through rigorous training and been prepared for being around children. You know, have been prepared for this, to come to the library, and they're just wonderful people, and the animals are just so sweet. So the kids can come and pet the dogs, pick out a story they want to read or bring one from home and sit there at the library and read to a dog. So we also added a new Lego Club as of August. And this has been a great turnout. Every week on Tuesdays, we have Lego Club at the library. We've had some wonderful Lego donations from locals as well. And so you should see all the, the kids, mostly elementary students that come so excited to build something with Legos. And we have quite a few Lego books, both fiction and nonfiction in the library. So that encourages reading there as well as they come up with new plans for what to build at Lego Club or to read about the characters. We've been expanding with a lot of professional partnerships for educational workshops and, and entertaining events as well, working with UFA Cooperative Extension. We had United States Patent and Trademark Office of Silicon Valley come to a program for us for a STEAM workshop. We've been working with the Historical Society. We've had, what's the other one that's recently? Yavapai Health Services has been coming to do some programs. They're doing some art classes and things like that. So there's a lot of great programs going on at the library, and a lot of them are for adults too. We, we aren't just for children and family. We are expanding with what we offer the entire community, including adults. So we hope to see you at the library soon too.
Thank you. Thank you. Very impressive.
So we just want to highlight just for a little bit the, what's coming in 2024. We do have, they have been doing computer classes for adults and seniors. We've had, I think, the last two years, four classes and then five classes. We've been doing computer basics, which is, this is your mouse, this is how to use a mouse, how to turn the computer on, how to copy paste, the very basics. This year, 2024, we're going to expand into more. We had a really good turnout for most of those basics classes, so we're gonna take it a step further and go a little, little wilder, I guess, with those. We're also probably gonna go into Microsoft Office. We've got a list of topics that patrons want us to go to. We've also, we're also going to be doing, getting a new ILS, what we call an ILS, Integrated Library System. So all of the backend software that we use to keep track of all of our patrons and all of our items will be switching out. So we'll be doing a lot of staff training on the new software, which promises to be a lot better than the one we have now and a lot more efficient. We're doing a lot, we're going to be doing, partnering with Recreation to do monthly movies in the park. We've been doing them a little sporadically through the last couple summers, but we're gonna start doing a regular program every month, probably one or two a month, I think. We also have some gardening and art class series coming up for adults, different arts and crafts, each on a regular basis. And then also a gardening from, what group was that, was gonna do that? Wasn't the Master Gardeners. It was, oh, University of Arizona? University of Arizona is gonna come and do a gardening, a series of gardening classes for us as a lot of people around here garden, and we get a really good turnout for those things. We're also gonna have our ARP tax, tax coming back this year. We're also looking to do some renovations for our community room, which is where we hold all of our programs and classes. We're going to do a new storage shed and new flooring in there. And we have the blindet with a book bags going on right now. We do this every year. Each one's a different topic, and they're not supposed to look inside and see what's in there before they check them out. So it's a little bit of, it's a little bit of, um, idea is that, you know, a lot of people come in the library and they get the same author over and over and over again. And it's, it's a way to kind of get out of your, of the same author all the time. So you never know what you're gonna get, and we've got a really good turnout and really good, like, for those. Each one's a different group. Yeah. We have historical fiction and some nonfiction out there, even some kids, as well as, I think, dog lovers, all sorts of different topics we've tried, so. We've got some more kids programs.
So a few of the exciting programs we're planning for 2024. We're having the, there's a historical group, Arizona Humanities, coming to do a presentation on the first fifty years of Arizona aviation history. That'll be next month on February sixteenth. And if you're interested in that topic, highly encourage you to come. And then we're also going to be expanding our homeschool curriculum materials. We've had a lot of requests. A huge demographic in our library patronage is homeschoolers. So they come to us for materials to help their children and educate them, and so we're working with them. There's three large groups that use Memory Park as well as the library and meet together and, and come inside. And so we're happy to help support them how we can. And then we're also going to be developing a parent and teacher section inside the library with educational resources so that, you know, moms who need some help or maybe a preschool teacher can come and find the resources they need in one designated area. During spring break, we're looking forward to having a folk tale performance. This will be like a theatrical production. So we have that planned for in mid-March to kick off spring break. We always do an Easter egg hunt for storytime, which is lots of fun. It's a little bit of a smaller crowd, so they can have that, you know, one-on-one interaction for Easter egg hunting and, and come to the library to hear some Easter books. As you probably know, we had a solar eclipse in October. There's another partial solar eclipse in April. So we're gonna do a educational eclipse workshop in viewing time at the library on that day in late morning. And then, of course, during summer, we have our summer reading programs. Every year, there's a different theme. This year's theme is Adventure Begins at Your Library, so we have a lot of adventurous programs planned and a lot of fun to get kids excited about the library and reading. Last November, we had the Highlands Nature Center come to do storytime, and it was a huge hit. They brought all kinds of wonderful animal specimens and showed the kids that and talked about nature and local wildlife, and we're hoping to have them continue with that. They've have plans to do probably a series of workshops and programs for our children here, and the kids won't have to go all the way out towards Link Lake, Lynx Lake to be at the Highland Center. The Highland Center will come here. We just love having the Gingerbread Lady every November for Thanksgiving, and she's just a hoot. So if you haven't seen her, it's a lot of fun for adults too. We had some, I noticed this last time she came to perform, that we had an adult staff member come with his wife to watch, and he had just as much fun as all the kids. So if you'd like to come, she's a crack up. We also have Singing Santa and Mrs. Claus. This is Prescott's official Santa that does Acker in the parades, and he comes and does special one-on-one time storytime with the kids and, and plays his guitar and sings and interacts with each of them. We do that every December. And then we also have indoor family movies inside the library. So when it's too cold to do an outdoor movie, you can come to the library and, and watch something with us. And of course, there's much more. There's not enough time or slides to tell you all the things we do at the library, but we hope to see you or your kids or your grandkids there soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will leave that to Recreation and Apocalypse.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and staff.
Hi.
It's good to see everybody. So I'm representing Recreation. I know everybody knows us mostly for events, and that's kind of our bread and butter. But we do a lot of fun things. I'm gonna go over some of our highlights from last year, just to give you guys a little taste. It was our first year doing children's art classes. We had a really good attendance for it. We did one in January, February, and I believe we did one in March. And great attendance. It was a lot of fun helping the kids do the crafts. The parents had fun. It was a whole family environment. A really great time. We had Luck of the Irish Family Bingo. That was, we partnered with the Senior Center at that one. That one, we had more people than we anticipated. A lot of, you kind of think of the old biddies with their daubers that are just kind of going ham on it. It was a lot of fun, a lot of fun. I, I'm also one of those people that gets really into bingo, so. We hosted our first daddy-daughter dance. We had over a hundred attendees, way more than we anticipated. It was the cutest thing I've ever seen in my life. We partnered with Word of Life for the Egg Hunt, the annual egg hunt. That's always a hit. They usually have about two thousand children that attend to collect eggs. And every year, I believe they hand out ten thousand eggs. Star Wars at the Library. We celebrated May the Fourth Be With You at the library and showed Star Wars. It was a great attendance. There were a couple kids that actually dressed up for it. They made their own costumes and everything. It was really, really cool. We had our mom-and-son dance last year as well. It was our first time holding that. That had a great attendance. We held that out at the park, which worked out really well because you have a bunch of little boys that have so much energy that refuse to dance with their mothers, but they just want to run around. And we had plenty of space for that, so it was great. We hosted our first All-American Bash. That went really well, too. It was, it felt kind of like a, just a hometown environment. We had vendors, we had music, we had food. Everybody that we talked to was really enjoying themselves, and again, it was just another family environment where people just sat around, they chatted, and had a good time. We've also been doing movies in the park, like the library touched on. Again, great attendance on those. We've been trying to do a variety of different movies. So if you guys have any recommendations, let us know. And let's see here. Territorial Days, we all know about Territorial Days. We believe this year, or this last year, was our biggest crowd yet. So even with the rain, we still had a really good crowd. And we partnered with AZ Gravel Rides for the Grinder, and we do that every year. They always have a great attendance. I know they have people that come internationally for it as well, which is really cool. Harvest Festival, we partnered with Yavapai College to do that. And then we partnered with AZ Pro Racing. That went really well, too. It seemed like everybody had a great time. That's the, the UTV racing, I believe. Okay. Everybody had a great time. So we did, this was our first year doing spooky movie in the park. So we showed Hotel Transylvania to everybody, and we brought out heaters and encouraged everybody to bring blankets and food, and they had a really fun time. It was kind of fun to do that right before Halloween, which leads us into Halloween. Halloween, again, it went great. We had a really good attendance. Since moving it to the Saturday before Halloween, we've noticed we actually have more people come. So it's been going well. And then December to remember, we have that at the park. We have pictures with Santa. We had bounce houses. There's music playing, Christmas karaoke. We had a great time. So looking at next, or looking at this year, we're gonna be hosting more children's art classes. Our first one is actually coming up on Thursday. We're gonna be doing Luck of the Irish Bingo again because, you know, we had such a great attendance, figured might as well keep doing it. We are introducing Families in Jammies Movie Night, so we're gonna be hosting this twice a year. Our first one's coming up in March, and we're doing it on Dr. Seuss's birthday, so we're gonna be showing, I believe, Cat in the Hat. And we're encouraging everybody to come dressed in their jammies, dress warm, come to the community center. We're gonna serve popcorn, play a movie. It'll be really fun. Excuse me. We're gonna have our daddy-daughter dance again. Basically, we're gonna have all the same events again, because if it's not broke, don't fix it. Some of these have been, you know, these have been going really, really well. We're hoping for best attendance out of each one, of course. And then I wanted to touch too, so here's some pictures for you guys to look at while I go over our classes that we offer at the community center. Because like I said, we don't just do events. We offer a lot more. So at the community center, we have various yoga classes. I think we have three or four different classes going on right now. And then we also have Chival. It's an art group that comes to meet. That's public, open to the public. We have, let me think here, Fitness Boot Camp is what we're starting, starting up in the middle of this month? We have, let me think here, Fitness Boot Camp is what we're starting, starting up in the middle of this month? Okay, February is starting up, and that's Monday through Friday. So if anybody wants to come get their workout on and do a boot camp, feel free. I will not be joining you. So we also have 4H that meets there, Cub Scouts that meet there. Again, this year, too, something we're also looking forward to is finding more instructors for different various classes. We're going to try to find some toddler classes, because we feel like that would be helpful for stay-at-home parents doing like a tumbling class or, you know, I don't know, any kind of class, I guess, with toddlers would be a lot of fun. So that's Recreation. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Morgan Heiner is going to come up and talk about aquatics next, and then when Morgan's done, you'll get to hear from me one more time.
Hi, I'm Morgan Heiner. I am the better half of Recreation, I would say. But, and I'm also Aquatics Supervisor, so I like to say Aquatics more where I know a lot. I've been with Aquatics for going on ten years, so ten summers I spent with the Aquatics. Are you sure? Okay, there we go. I'm twenty-five, I promise. Okay, so. So some, some different highlights for the Aquatics. It's a, it's a short, it's a short summer, I should say, but a lot happens in those couple months, a lot to jam pack. So we had twelve saves. We partner with the Transit and do something called Paulden Plunge. And that's where kids in Paulden who are just at home can come in. The Transit brings them in for free. They get into the pool for free. They're able to hang out there and not cause any ruckus, I would say. So we had a hundred and seventy-nine kids from Paulden enjoy the pool this summer. Something that's more important to me is swim lessons. We offer four sessions throughout the summer, three sessions, three different timeframes a day. We had a hundred, over a hundred swim lessons taught to kids. I would say that's a very big thing for us. And then we had something called Water Rescue with the, with the Fire Department, where the Fire Department comes in. We practice pediatric saves. We practice what we do with the Fire Department if they came in, which way they'd come in, how our staff would react, which they're all trained at the beginning, but it's always good to have a refresher. We also begin, began renovating the pool. I don't know if you've been by there today or recently, but it definitely is going to come a long way, I would say. And then this last year, we were opened up to Labor Day, which was a big, big thing for the public. We had a great, a great income or opinion, I should say, from the public. But 2024, at a glance, we're looking at obviously swim lessons. We're bringing back Aquafit. We were unable to find an Aquafit instructor, but we actually have someone this spring, or I mean, this winter, who reached out to us that's interested in doing it. We were able to get a new lifeguard instructor. Our past life instructor is great, fantastic. He just would like to move on with the life. So luckily, there's somebody with Yavpai College that's willing to partner with us. So we're able to send guards there to have them be trained while the pool is getting a makeover. And then this new thing we're introducing is something called Fun Nights. It's going to be every Saturday. It'll be a different theme for people to come enjoy. And then again, staying open to Labor Day. And then this is our schedule that we're looking at for this next season. So yeah, it's going to be a great summer, I hope, so, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Would you mind explaining what a save is?
Yes. So a save in our mind is any time a lifeguard has to jump into the pool to save, to save somebody. So it doesn't have to be like anything crazy. A lot of times, we experience it with something we call the bottleneck. It drops down quite far, and some kids can just be bopping around and not even realize that they hit, and their whole face goes under, and some kids aren't normalized with that water on the face. So that's where we save most kids, I would say, right there. But it's really anything that a guard has to jump in and pick somebody up. So luckily, we haven't had any crazy ones.
So that is Community Services. That is your community services. And now you guys know why I'm so young. They keep me young. They keep me on my toes. They keep me doing something, let me tell you. Do you guys have any questions for us? I do have a couple of other things I do want to hit on real quick. I think kitchen renovations probably at the top of everyone's mind, just to let you know. We are moving forward. We just had asbestos testing a couple of weeks ago. We got the tests back. It's all clean, clear to go. So now we'll move on with the next phase and continue on with that process. The pool, as Morgan mentioned, has been completely drained and has been shipped away about March, mid-March, I believe it is. They'll be back to resurface the pool, ready for filling and for us to train our guards. First part of May, we will be doing lifeguard hiring before spring break. Also, in front of you, I put a brochure. This is not the final product by any means. But we decided, now that we are one big department, it's time to get the word out there. And we're planning on having brochures all around town with Community Services, who we are, what we do, where we do it. And then each division will also have a brochure behind this brochure for everyone to pick up with schedules of activities, our events, et cetera. Recreation is working on some larger-scale events that we will be coming back to and proposing a few different things this next year. Our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is working diligently on looking at added activities and facilities for the town. Again, things that we will bring back to you for your approval once we get there. And... That's it. Any questions?
Any questions for anybody over here? All right, thank you.
Well, thank you for allowing us to do what we do.
Thank you for doing it. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made in second, all in favor? We're adjourned until six.